He was, he was bumping.
Call the meeting to order according to that clock. All members are present and accounted for. Do everyone stand, please, and before the class, face the flag and join us in the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have at least one amendment and possibly two. You had something?
Um, yes. Uh, number two, the asphalt repair quotes, uh, those went over a hundred thousand. And as we know, we need to go out and have that publicly posted and all those things. So we're gonna take number two off until it's been done. Even though we have three quotes, it has to be done in a certain manner. So I'll bring that to you on June eleventh.
Okay, and number twenty-two. We're gonna go into closed session for a couple of personnel items that we need to discuss in closed session. So please add that at the end of the meeting. Closed session, closed session personnel?
Yes.
This will call it. Okay. If there's nothing more for amendments and changes, I would look for an approval, approval of the agenda with changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the changed agenda.
Rob on the motion?
Seconded.
Seconded by Katie. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. We have no scheduled presenters this evening. And our student report, our young people aren't here this evening, so we'll move down to other committee reports. Does anyone have anything for the cause?
Real quickly, we just met with the curriculum committee this evening. And basically what was talked about was, um, they're considering going ahead with the new grading system for six, seventh grade. Where they would work it off of not so much A, B, C, or D. They would go for a numerical system with, uh, four, three, two, one. Be a little bit more consistent too with the grade point average, that sort of thing. But what it's gonna, it's broken down into two components. One is content knowledge and one is student skills. Content knowledge would be, what would be, uh, to determine eligibility on a roll in grade point average. The other part is, um, student skill, which would really kinda tells you what type of effort the students put, putting into their grade. You know, so it won't reflect the grade point average itself. But if someone's doing really well and isn't putting forth the effort, it's like, well, you could probably do better even though, you know, you're doing well. But for the student that maybe is, uh, not doing well, and they can look at the effort on this side, wouldn't be a part of the grade. But they can, they can have a measure of how well that student's doing. They can report to the parents, you know, and that's gonna be based off of consistency. Um, with, with, the student, uh, skills would be based off of timeliness, self-regulation, and effort rating. So timeliness, are they getting their tests in on time? Uh, self-regulation, I can't, you might want to-
Behavior.
Behavior, and of course, effort rating. Are they putting in the effort? Do they see that the teachers, do the teachers see that the students putting forth the effort necessary? So it, it kinda gives, at student conferences, when you go to conferences, the teachers can report back, yeah, well, this is maybe some of the reasons why you might wanna, you know, get in contact with your students and child and say, hey, this is why things are happening, you know. More parent involvement as well, seeing what's going on. So I think it's a good idea. It looks really neat.
Pretty significant change.
Well, it, it really what it's doing is it's breaking a typical grade into two pieces. So instead of having one letter grade that tells you about a kid, there, you're still gonna get that. But that's only gonna be based on what a kid knows as far as what they know for the class, the content knowledge itself. So it's really gonna be largely based off of tests. You know, in, in our lingo, we call them summative assessments, so kind of end of chapter tests, end of unit tests, and those big kinda pieces that show that. And that's the only thing that goes into that. So, you know, no more necessarily taking off points for things being late. That's gonna be reported, but it's gonna be reported separately from what a kid knows. So that's kinda the idea, is that this is gonna give you a, a better picture. The example I used in our committee was, you've got two kids that get a B. You've got one kid that works really hard to get Bs, and they put in great effort, they get everything done on time, they're a good student. And you've got the kid who gets a B, but, you know, they really don't ever do any homework, and they don't really try very hard. They're just naturally bright, they can take a test and get an A. So this is gonna paint a different picture about who those kids are. If you look at just a letter grade right now, they both, they both have Bs. So you'd think they're the same, but they're really not the same kid, they're, they're not the same student. So this is just gonna give parents and students and anybody who lives at that report card area a better idea of who that kid is.
For continuity, is there a, this is a, a six, twelve thing that we're working on?
Well, we are gonna kinda pilot this at middle school for right now and see how it goes. We had a lot of questions still about appropriating us at the high school level and, you know, what does that mean for college and transcripts and things like that. And I, I think, you know, the idea is that we do this for a few years with the idea that we're gonna roll it up into the high school eventually. There will be some pieces of this that we need to kinda get ironed out as we go along. But we've had some great conversations about it. You know, staff over the last couple of years have been doing a lot of research and reading, um, educational research on best practice and grading. And, and we feel like we're taking some steps down that road with this system, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Any other committee reports?
Facilities met a couple days ago, and it was introduced to the asphalt repair folks. But that'll have to be open for a public bid.
What is that since the dollar notes? I never gotten to talk to you about it.
Tell them.
The dollar notes.
Anyone else? How do you think we have foundation?
We have foundation, yeah. Report was, they raised twenty-one thousand dollars at the auction, that was before expenses. I haven't heard of the, the funding.
I think we'll hear it at the next meeting, yeah.
But it was a successful event, even though they had to change the date and have it on Friday rather than Saturday. And it was a pretty good turnout, and just like to say thanks to everybody for all their hard work and everybody who came and participated. It was a fun night.
Thank you.
We tech met about three weeks ago. Nothing really major in discussions, only thing that really stands out is, uh, I think it's more of a discussion on cybersecurity.
We're meeting tomorrow, are we tech meetings tomorrow for the, our group?
Yeah, we, they brought up, Aaron brought up how, uh, some of the hacks have been going on through third party. You know, and, you know, are we insured through third party? So let's say one of our vendors gets hacked, and they get in through our email system to our controls and then into our systems. It's typical how it works, it's not direct. So, but it sounds like that's something that's gonna be a fairly, something that's come along, especially, I believe you guys are looking at cyber insurance.
And I'd rather do the cyber insurance through the WeTech organization itself and not have it individual for our school. So as soon as we get that back, you know, I just think it would be, if our servers are all in Kenyon, you know, it kinda makes sense to do it as a group and see what that expense is gonna look like. But it's definitely something you have to worry about and think about.
Well, another thing even, you know, Aaron's looking at is, what does it cover? And, you know, my question is-
And the people that have been attacked with insurance?
Right.
They're not always covered.
Right.
So it's kind of like, yeah.
Buying useless insurance, or my question is, do we, back to any vendor that we do business with electronically, are they insured and do they need to be? So if it's found out that it came through another vendor, does that be our insurance, or should be their insurance that pays for it?
I do really like that WeTech is taking this and, and, cause we don't know much about it, so I really appreciate Aaron's efforts on this. And hopefully we know more tomorrow and we can bring something to you. But I still would rather do it as a group, I think it's better to do it in force altogether than individual schools doing different things, so. We'll have an answer soon, and they'll probably be at the June eleventh meeting, maybe even have Aaron come in.
That'd be good.
Staff development met, um, twice in April, and once in April, once in May, I had to miss the May one. But they were talking, and did they decide to go ahead with the Alice training?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, so they were talking about getting Alice training, um, sending a couple, and my understanding was you're sending a couple teachers, or a group of teachers to get trained, and then they will come back to train our, the rest of the staff.
And we have some extra news on top of that, we just found out that instead Jeff Shogun, who works in, um, Pine Island, has offered to come in and help us with the training. So even though we're getting-
Oh, amazing.
You know, ten, you know, to twenty of us trained, he's gonna come in and help with some of that too, so we're excited to get that news.
So it's a safety, crisis, crisis prevention, like crisis planning, um, learning how to handle a situation if it would arise and, and to be proactive about, you know, being, keeping the school safe. So I thought, I think it's a great way to develop.
Any input from you, please?
Um, it's, it's really a pretty major, such, it's a pretty substantial change in the way we typically handle lockdown drills and intruder situations. We have, uh, not changed either, it predates me, so it's been a long time. We've had a pretty, um, traditional, you know, hide and place lockdown system. And, uh, there's a lot of research that shows that that's not the best way to handle those kind of intruder, um, active shooter situations. So Alice is one, um, methodology for handling that. And I think we kinda picked it because it's probably the one of the most prevalent ones out there. And there's pretty robust training for staff in being able to handle that and some ongoing stuff. So, um, it's ultimately gonna be a pretty good thing, I think, for, for the safety of, of our district.
Jeff had reached out to me, and I was not familiar with it at all, so I just kinda forwarded the information on. It seems like the, uh, law enforcement in the communities and the county law enforcement seem to be kinda running in parallel with each other. They both, they both wanna get us involved with it, but maybe don't understand the other ones contacting us at the same time, so.
Yeah.
Thanks for helping me out with it.
And I went online and looked at it, it looks like a great, great program and very informative and-
Another reason I really like it is if teachers were to move around different districts, you know, the teachers are having come in typically trained in this as well. So it becomes, it becomes a little more universal, so that you don't all of a sudden have ten teachers that, or ten staff members in general that haven't been trained in it, so.
And it's not just schools, I know it's hospitals, like, there's, it's wide, broad spectrum of-
The training that we're going to in, in June, I, I, there were a bunch of different just private businesses that were bringing in a group of people to train in it also. So it's a, it's not just a school kinda situation, it's-
It's a widely used practice, yeah.
And the, the training's at no charge to us, is it?
Oh, no, there's a cost.
Yeah.
It's significant.
It's not free.
Yeah. Staff development has really embraced it though and decided to move forward with it, so. It's good, I think it's a great investment for the safety of our school.
Okay, anyone else, committee? Moving on, administrative reports, elementary school, Jen?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't get time, it's the month of May too. Although Tim would have liked if I would have sent my pictures and just really won't. Anyway, um-
That's why it's disabled today.
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
That's it.
Just a thank you to the American Legion for their, um, another successful year of their bikes for books program. So we had that, uh, just a little week and a half ago or so, and we had three girls and three boys, you know, be able to head on down to, um, Altoff's and get a bike, so that was really exciting for them. And then the school garden will officially be planted by tomorrow.
Last day of planting.
Last day of planting, so thank you to Deanne and her work with that, cause that is pretty exciting. And it's, it's fun to, to watch videos of these kids that are just so excited about, because now they've seen what the end result can be and they get, they've tasted, and so that's just really exciting. So MCAs are now officially finished up, and that was nice to cross off the old list. We have our PTO fun days coming up next week amongst a lot of different little field trips that are going on. And our variety show, the auditions are this week, Tuesday and Thursday, with it being on the last day of school. So welcome to it. And that's it.
Thank you. Kim?
You know, I kinda put what we do in seasons, and our season of prom is over. And our season of testing is over now, and, and our next season is the season of choir concerts and band concerts. So, um, that's quickly approaching for us. Uh, it's just some important dates. On Wednesday, um, night at seven o'clock in the auditorium, we have our academic awards and our scholarship presentations. I highly encourage you all to attend, we're gonna be giving out thousands of dollars in scholarships. You know, we have our third year in a row that we've got, uh, a student receiving a hundred thousand dollar Gemini engineering scholarship, so that's phenomenal. It just, what Gemini has done for the schools, uh, in the last few years has been great. Speaking of Gemini, I met with, um, some representatives from Gemini, uh, last week, and we are going to be working on an apprenticeship program with Gemini, starting hopefully in the fall, more likely it'll be in the spring of next year. But trying, they're, they're looking for some skilled technical workers, um, and we're looking for connections between local businesses and school. And it's, it's just, this is a great opportunity, uh, for both of us. And this will kinda parallel with what that's been working with, with the skills training, so, but more of a, a homegrown version of that. Also, exciting news for me is we met with representatives from GCB and, um, Fernbrook today to talk about school basement, uh, starting a school-based mental health program here at Cannon Falls High School. And it looks like next year we're gonna have a point five FTE-
Fully funded.
Mental health counselor, therapist in the building, uh, next year. And that is, I'm sure that halftime is not gonna be nearly enough for what we could use, um, providing mental health services to our students. So a couple of exciting things coming up. Besides that, uh, if you check the website, uh, we've got, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday next week, we've got either band and/or choir concerts. Then we've got a, the final band concert the last week of school on the thirtieth. And then, you know, finals and graduation on June first. It's only thirteen school days away.
Who's counting now?
Not that I, somebody told me that. I don't start counting till like Wednesday of the last week of school. What's that? When I can count on like three figures.
Thank you. Community ed and activities, Jake had sent us an email pertaining to one of the items later on we'll deal with. And other than that, I don't, we didn't get any other input from him, did we?
No.
Okay. Dave isn't here, technology?
Yeah, um, I put in my report, uh, just a couple of things that I wanted to, uh, highlight, point out. The district website, uh, facelift is done. And if you haven't gone out and taken a look at the new district website, that's actually, I would encourage you to do that. Cause one of the things that we kind of are encouraged by is that we're able to kinda showcase and highlight in a banner that kind of has things like the school garden and our state championship speech team. And we are able to kind of promote that a little bit more and kind of promote what's going on inside, um, the buildings, which I think is really awesome. And I, thanks to Sandy, who spent quite a bit of time, kinda worked on that along with, um, got some input from Lori Hansen and some of the other, um, administrative support staff and kind of how to improve that. And one of the best, uh, bits of feedback I got is Molly Strauss told me that it's taking her, um, less directions. She, people call up, how do I find whatever? It's taking her less time to tell them, or it's less clicks to get to wherever they need to be. So that was really good feedback and that was awesome, so. Uh, state testing, um, I, we're also, the tech department is really glad state testing is done. And we had, uh, only third and fourth graders tested in the computer lab this year, everybody else did it in a classroom or in a designated, designated space. And we had hardly any tech issues reported, which was really good, because there was a lot of schools that were struggling with some, um, getting bumped off or whatever in the middle of testing. So that was awesome. Summer planning, we're going through end of lease agreements, uh, trying to either send back or sell back some of our devices, uh, that we've had. Uh, looking at student device purchases, one of which is on the agenda tonight to purchase Chromebooks. And then, um, just some classroom technology purchasing, and I'll talk maybe a little bit more about that in, in June. But we're kind of trying to flop and flip some things over in the classrooms. And we've kinda started with televisions and we're kinda moving forward with that. And so I'm kinda excited about the direction we're going with that. The April technology committee report there, I put kind of a summary that the tech plan was approved by the committee, and it's on the agenda night for approval, but the three notable features that I kinda just wanted to point out, is that we now have tech goals with broad and specific strategies to better identify the needs and management of technologies and systems in our district. That's the first one, kinda the big goal. The second is to offer resources and training to support staff, administration, staff development, and using our district adopted programs and technologies, as well as the integration of appropriate technologies with best practices and skills to meet learning goals. And the third kind of big goal is to provide appropriate technology, promote appropriate technology use, and digital presence and communications by our students, and provide information and training, um, to staff, students, families, on how we communicate what goes on here at school. And whether that's via email, whether that's through a blast phone call, or whether that's just knowing, knowing where to go in the, um, in the, um, website and things like that, so. It also has, the other kind of couple notables is that I put a list of our past, current, and future plans of technology, and kind of our implementation of where we've been, where we are, and where we're going. So that you all kind of have an idea of some of the things that are coming up. And the last, uh, thing that I'm really excited about is actually in the appendix. Um, and that was with the help of Deanne Coleman, Cindy Droger, and Matt Junker, who teach media studies. And, uh, we're looking at these technology literacy, uh, what that means to be tech literate, media literate, um, to be a digital citizen. What kind of computer skills do we want students to have? So you will actually see now K through twelve, we have learning outcomes that we have for technology and media and digital citizenship, what we would like our students to know. Part of that is to show the work that Deanne's doing, that Cindy Droger and Matt Junker are doing in their classrooms, to give, to inform, not only to show people what they're doing, but it's also to help teachers know, hey, students really are learning about these presentation tools in these classes. Start, start using, we can start using them more, it gives me a framework for training them on how to kinda push those, um, some of those digital technologies we have. How to, um, know that students do really know how to use them. It's okay to take a leap of faith, they already kind of have an idea of what you're expecting of them. So that was kinda the intent with that. And then just in kind of in closing, I'd like to acknowledge, um, the commitment of some, uh, teachers who've been on, on our tech committee for the last two years, and that's Sarah Wahlberg, Chris Sampson, and Sue Samson from the elementary school, and Ann Davison, Alex Jones, and Matt Junker. Their, um, input has been very valuable and very appreciated, um, and I, um, am thankful for their two years of commitment. Some of them are gonna continue, some are gonna walk away, and I wouldn't expect any more than two years, but I appreciate and value their input, so. We'll talk maybe a little bit more about the tech plan, or if you wanna scan over that and ask any questions when we get to that, I'd be happy to answer them. I think we have a pretty good idea where we're going for the next three years, so.
And like how it's simplified, I feel like it's a lot easier to use and more exact what we mean and measurable. So I, I like it, but we'll talk about it when we get there.
Yep.
What are you gonna do with these two years, people that decide you're gonna maybe move on? How do you replace it?
There's people dying to get out of the town, what are you talking about?
Actually, what was really funny is there was a member of them that said, I don't wanna leave. I'm kinda like this city, it's been very interesting, and it's things I didn't know about before, so. So that was kinda fun, uh, to hear that, but yeah, there's a couple of them, their lives are changed a little bit, maybe added kids in the mix or- So, yeah, anyhow.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Soup report?
Um, you know, I sent you one last Friday, my computer is not connecting right now, so we won't get into it too deep. But I do wanna just a really public thank you to the fire department. They again continue to give, 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 and most recently, um, working with us, I'm getting some new AEDs. Some of the situations that have happened in our buildings, you know, it's just a really neat thing that they are stepping up and again, helping us with something that is truly life-saving, so I wanna thank them. And then the only other really big thing I wanted to point out that was not in your Friday update is, last, last week was teacher appreciation week. And Ms. Chappie definitely got into the elementary feel of things, walking through a bin, building, and there's like bingo going on over the intercoms and things like that. So she has adopted the elementary feel very well, so it was fun. But we had a lot of fun things going on for teacher appreciation week, and I just wanna publicly, um, thank all eighty-four of our teachers that are on staff and how remarkable they are for everything they give to kids and give up their time a lot to do, um, extra things, so very appreciative for everything. So other than that, I think you got most of it in my Friday update.
Okay, any questions for Ben? Okay, public input, anyone wishing to speak to the district about matters concerning the district, this is your opportunity. Having heard nothing, we'll move on. Consideration to approve the finance report, Josh?
Sure. So page five of your agenda packet, and pretty, um, brief summary of kinda what's going on here as we're between the approval tonight of the initial budget for fiscal year nineteen and next month, the final revised budget for eighteen. Couple things to note, this is the cash flow worksheet, just going through the end of the fiscal year, which is quickly approaching. Only about six, uh, quick weeks before we're on to, uh, the next fiscal year. Checking account balances on the top, some of the numbers to note in the middle here are gonna be your estimated school and state gen tax. They'll be coming out with more hard numbers as we get closer, uh, the estimate would become on May twenty-fourth. So we're looking at, uh, sometime late this week, early next week, I'll have the exact numbers, but it's a pretty good estimate of where we're gonna fall at. Payroll numbers, you know, generally we look at, uh, on a given fifteenth or thirtieth payroll, looking at about two hundred to two hundred and ten thousand dollars going out the door and, uh, just the net payroll. The two bigger amounts here with the May thirtieth and the June fifteenth would be, uh, spring coaches and workers on the May thirtieth and then teacher payouts, and you clean up stuff on the June fifteenth payroll. So just some estimates there. As we approve now the initial nineteen budget, uh, start working on putting the full next year's cash flow together. Uh, and again, not anticipating any need to do any borrowing for anticipation type, uh, circumstances for the district, uh, cash flow wise, uh, in a positive situation. So, um, unless there are any questions, I can do my best to, to answer what we have.
When we look at all of this, we see quite a bit of estimates, and-
Yep.
How do you go about getting to the, the dollars that you get to, for example, in ideas money, how do you project that?
Yeah, the, all the ideas are, I can't return an actual number until the date they come out, they're estimated by the state. So, uh, even though it's an estimate here, they're pretty accurate within, you know, plus or minus, uh, maybe ten, fifteen thousand dollars, which, uh, you know, six hundred, seven hundred dollar payment, that's pretty close to what we're doing. You look at what goes out on, say, a weekly basis, you know, we can generally ballpark, uh, from our office, about twenty-five grand generally. It's things like conferences, officials, workers, those sorts of deals. It will fluctuate, so it's an average, we might have a month where you have to get out of Waterville or something like that, you might see a higher one. But on average, it's kinda what it does, so it's easier for me to plug those types of numbers in, that way as I go through the, uh, the process between the cash flow. In terms of payroll, what I do is I put in the actual amounts from last year's each payroll, and then estimate, uh, percentage increaser. And that includes when and then to your PRA and your FICA and all that stuff, so it just plugs in the estimates. So they're not the actual numbers until after it's passed, after it's passed, the cash flow indicator is no good for us anymore, cause it's actual data, and it's in the past, this all indicates that from in the future. So that's where the estimates come from, so rather than saying actual, 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 they'll get the estimates. The only real actual number I can give you are the debt service payments, because those are what they are.
Any, um, any more conversation from the, the state? Are we still looking at, um, the House and the Senate and the governor arguing about potential?
It's still really up in the air. Uh, nothing has changed that I've heard of, um, I know that we have our next meeting on June twenty-fourth. Even the messages that we've gotten from C are not changed at all, so they're just in different places right now. I think, you know, the kind of the surprise for everyone was the two percent from the governor put, being put out there. How does that change things? We haven't gotten that, I don't know if it'll be fully supported, so I haven't heard anything, if Josh has, I mean, we haven't, haven't gotten any updates on that, so. We won't know till we know.
As usual? I just thought maybe there would be a nice surprise for us.
And I also thought, you know, they'd be giving us at least a hint at what direction we're going in, um, that just hasn't, hasn't been set yet, so.
Okay. Any questions for Josh? Thank you. Moving on, consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the finance report. The second motion.
It's not even in the back here, all right. Jerry?
Yep.
And Rob? Thanks for that reminder. Any other? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? It's always that first page. A consent agenda, items under the consent agenda are considered routine and can be enacted under one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss a particular item, it, it will be removed or it can be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. Anyone have any questions?
I do have a couple of things I just wanna point out. Vicki Garrett has decided to retire, um, and we will be giving a notice of the retirement party. We have a few people that will be celebrating on that Monday, the last day of school. But I just really wanna thank Vicki, she has, I, I don't even know the exact years, it's been forever. Do you happen to know Lori Opan?
Uh, nineteen.
Nineteen, nineteen years that she's given to Cannon Falls School, so. And then the other, um, person is Jamie Pickering, she hasn't been here very long, but certainly impacted our school. She's done a really nice job in the front office, and if you ever called or stopped in, um, you know that she's just done a great job. She is oddly enough moving over to-
She is oddly enough moving over to SMS, which does our payroll services. And so most likely, you know, that will still be a connection, and she'll end up being over in our district office with that. So that isn't finally yet or anything like that, but I just want to thank you for her time as well. Two great people leaving us, we thank them for their service.
Please note on that, page seven, I make acceptance of donations again. Always good to recognize those folks for their AEDs, the fire department came through.
Right. What are the AEDs? It's the devices, I don't even know.
Automated external defibrillators.
There you go. That's it.
The paddles.
The patches that you put on, and you can do shock.
We have a practice session.
Good job, Joshua.
Good training.
Yeah. That's it for me.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Monthly bills would be one that we usually tap into for questions.
I'll make a motion to approve a consent agenda.
Motion by Kurt.
A second.
Second by Katie. Other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? No old business under new business, consideration to approve the bold plan, bomber online learning days.
Okay. This has been a progress, you know, all year, kind of getting this together, working on this, simplifying it to one page so we can make it really easy for our families. I had two different meetings, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. Lot of questions, really great questions and comments from the staff. Those have been implemented in here. I know you've all had this, I know you've read this. It's basically very similar to everyone in the HVL. It allows us, if there's a conference type thing, that all of us could go into the same thing. In Goodhue, it's the gold days, Goodhue Online Learning Days. In Zimbrowa, it's wild days. And everyone's kind of got their own acronyms for this. So this is very common. This is going to be very, very similar to the languages throughout the HVL. One little hiccup that some schools have run into is in our district, 92% of people have, you know, internet in their homes, which is great. But that still means that we've got eight, you know, up to 10% of people that don't have those accesses. We'll be looking at some kind of external hotspots. They could be either used in bus rides, you know, if you're going down to Stewartville, you know, and the football team wants to have a hotspot on the way home, I'm sure they want to work on their homework and things like that. Well, maybe not. But those hotspots could be used in those situations. We also would follow the same logic that if you were on vacation or gone, you'd have three days to make up that work. This isn't just for weather, that's why we don't talk about just weather on here. I think there's great times where Principal Hodges would use it, ACT testing, or some big, maybe not ACT testing, but some testing that's going on in the high school. You actually could have an online learning day for certain, your building, and then Jennifer could still have school in her building, or something like that. If the furnace was to go out, that's happened in other districts, you know, you would be able to hop over and use this, you know, bomber online learning day. So I know you've seen it, we've asked a lot of pre-questions. If there's anything you'd like to ask now, we're looking at doing this for next year. The big question is, do we still get snow days? Sure, you still get your first two. We rarely go over two, but this just prevents us from having to extend the school year and have students come back when their parents have planned a vacation, or taking away from a spring break, or something like that, when trip's already planned and things like that. So I think it's a great way to go. I think the staff is on board. The people that have come to me and talked to me said, this is great. This is much better than making it up in the end of June. So if you have any questions, I can answer them, but it's pretty standard. I think almost everyone in the HVL has got a very similar one-page document that'll go out to parents and such.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Brenda. To approve the bold plan. Your second?
I'll say.
Second by Jerry. Any other discussion?
So if kids don't have internet at home, would the building be accessible to them to gain it here? Or are we locking the building down if we're going to do a bold?
If it's, well, it depends. Depends on things like if it's a weather day, you know, and that would go out in the announcement. If it truly is for weather, we don't want our staff, you know, endangering themselves either, but they would have access, the teachers would be accessible that amount of time. So the questions that came up, like a kindergartner, what are they going to do? Well, they're going to have a bold folder that's going to have activities inside of it, ready to go. They may not hop on online, you know, those types of things. So I know the building wouldn't be accessible in those kinds of situations. Or if it was an emergency evacuation kind of thing, obviously not. Good question.
Do you still get reimbursed for bold days?
That's what makes them so wonderful.
Okay. Gotcha.
You get that. The library is going to be a great resource here. Library has free internet as well, those kinds of things. So there's accessibility, but again, if it's weather, are you able to get there or not? So we're just going to, you know, we're going to pilot this for one year. We're going to write down everything that we don't like about it. Anything, you get feedback from the community and then adjust accordingly.
Okay.
Anyone else? We have a motion in a second. All in favor of approval of the bold plan, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, jumping down to number three, consideration to approve the Cannon Falls tech plan for '18 to 2020.
I kind of went over it.
Yeah, I kind of went over it, but just kind of some, the goals and things like that is on page five. So basically, I kind of have kind of three broad goals of looking at our digital systems, devices, and applications we use, looking at 21st century teaching and learning practices and skills, and then looking at this kind of bigger, broader goal of community connections and making sure that people are getting the information that they need, and students even using, knowing about good digital citizenship, what that means. So I put the goals at the top, and the strategies for meeting those goals are kind of listed underneath there.
I guess for me, Amy and I, I wasn't at the last tech meeting, I was at the one before because a lot of the content was there as well, the first one before that. I guess this is me, and this is my opinion, I struggle with kindergartens, kindergartners and first graders having access. I look at some of the, you know, the skills and functions and the apps, and one of the things is we want them to be able to open a website and follow directions from my teacher on how to access information. I'm, it might be old school, but I wonder how many parents want their kids on iPads, getting on websites at a younger age, you know? When do we introduce this technology to younger kids? Do we do it in kindergarten? Is that too young? And I'm posing a question here too, but I'm a little uncomfortable with that. It's like, can we do something instead of technology in kindergarten, especially kindergarten?
So that brought up at the tech committee meeting, and one of the things, the kindergarten teacher, Sarah Walberg, is on the committee, and talked about some of the things that she uses websites for and things like that. One of which is, in elementary, you have to read to self. There's a program called Daily Five. One of the parts of the Daily Five is reading to self. Well, kindergartners don't necessarily read to self because they don't have the reading skills, but we still want them to be able to read to self. So what that happens is, is they end up going off to an application that their teachers tell them to go to, where they choose a book and listen to a book, much like a lot of us back in the whatever. I had a cassette player when I was a kid, and I used to pop in the cassette tape, and I used to listen to somebody read the book to me. That's the kind of websites they're going to. They're going to the ones that only their teachers are directing them to. Some of those two, some of those learning outcomes and things, come from our K through five media literacy lesson plans that are put out by organizations like ISTI or Common Sense Media, that those are suggestions that they have, and the reason why they're having those kinds of suggestions about whatever, having a kindergartner follow an adult. Don't go off to a website by yourself. Make sure that you listen to adults. And there's all kinds of things about, if you could come and kind of listen to Deanne, in fact, I'm kind of glad she's here because she does a really great job scaffolding that whole program, starting very, very young. Just like when you're in kindergarten, you don't cross the street without holding somebody's hand. You don't go out onto the internet without somebody guiding you, or somebody giving you a directive to go.
What happens though, once they leave the school, and now you've introduced them how to gain website access at home on internet? Have we brought them into an environment and taught them how to be exposed to internet outside the school now? And now they're at home, and now they're, at what age do we want to do that? That's where I'm uncomfortable. I don't know if we should be bringing iPads into kindergarten classrooms at this time, and that's me.
And I guess I look at it a little bit, I have kids myself, but I look at it a little bit more the opposite end, is now we've shown them what we are expecting versus not showing anything at all and just letting them have at it. So I guess I, you know, there's that fine line, and I can't say I don't disagree with you, but also knowing...
And that's, but have we brought that to their home now? I mean, maybe there's parents at home saying, you know, these kids don't know how to get on the internet, and maybe they do, you know, maybe their kindergarten, I may be on the way to...
Kindergartners know how to get on the internet 100%.
Okay.
Three-year-olds can.
Three-year-olds can get on the internet.
Yeah, they can get on the internet. Okay.
And we're not sending iPads home with them. No. So if they're doing it at home, it's completely parents.
Right.
Teaching them responsibly.
Well, yes and no. I wonder if that's realistic to say we're teaching them responsibly. I think we're putting them onto the, into the internet world, and we're exposing them at an awfully young age, and that's what I'm saying. And I don't know if we want that. I think we, you know, my personal opinion is like, they're young, they're at an age where we, there's other things, a book, something else, interaction with, more interaction with the teacher, but you know.
Yeah. I'd like, if you don't mind, I'd like Deanne to speak to this, because she's the one that really helped with that, putting especially the K through five stuff together.
So I take my lessons on digital citizenship, K through five directly from the Common Sense Media website. If you'd like to go on there and look at the educator site, and you can look right at the scope and sequence and what we're teaching kids. And the three things that my kindergartners know is number one, you don't go on any device without asking an adult, a trusted adult. That's number one lesson that they learn. Then the second analogy that Amy gave, you don't go to sites that make you uncomfortable, just like you wouldn't do anything in your neighborhood that would be wrong, crossing the street without looking both ways. So a great analogy. So they know that on technology, they need to be following those same practices that they would in their other everyday life. And the third thing is, if there is something wrong, that you report it, that you tell, if you feel uncomfortable, if something happens, that you tell a trusted adult. I feel that technology is another tool, and I guess I don't know another thing to compare it to, but there are a lot of dangerous things that can happen to kids. There are a lot of situations that kids come into toddlers on up, and if we don't teach them the tools, if we don't give them the right tools to know how to deal with those situations, we're not being good educators. So this technology is all over. The kids, you go out to a restaurant, go to, you know, a park, kids are on their parents' phones, you know? I mean, I used to have to take my kids and take them for a walk when they were, you know, fussy at a restaurant. Now parents hand them their phones. The kids need those skills to know how to handle that technology. And I think the key thing in that outcome that's listed is as directed by a teacher, as directed by a teacher, as in any other curriculum that you would have. So I would encourage you to look at Common Sense Media, that's where I get my curriculum from. It's a highly rated curriculum.
Yeah.
And something that has parent, community access, you know, it's been, it's a highly rated curriculum, and the scope and sequence is right there. I think we need to give these kids, I understand your concern, I'm, my boys are grown, my kids didn't have iPads until they were in high school, you know, I limited their access. I understand your concern about giving kids too much too soon, but it's there, and we have to teach them the tools to be safe and to be successful using those tools.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
What kind of time, I guess I'm not as, I don't have the same concerns as Kurt, but in the elementary school, like what, how much time do they spend on a screen daily, like in their seven-hour day? Would you say it's just during media class, or is it...
It would depend on the grade level.
Yeah, right.
You know, you have the little ones that are on a very limited amount of time. Again, they don't take their iPads home.
Right.
And it's appropriate, you know? We're teaching the kids their motor skills too. They're not going to be, you know, successful people if they don't have those fine motor skills and the gross motor skills. So I think it's age-appropriate.
Okay.
And I think that, again, to be a good educator, you have to have your kids successful in all areas. We know that, you know, there are kids that are more tech savvy than others, but everybody needs that baseline of skills.
Oh, I totally agree with that. I just, one of my things is, is, you know, I've always limited screen time with my kids at home, and it makes it a little difficult as a parent to not maybe understand how much screen time they're getting at school now, being that they have those devices.
Right.
So I think it's just good to, because I don't, I don't know, it's just one of those things that, it's like, we went to the extreme of, okay, none during the school week at home, and when they were younger, now it's a little different, but. And then my other question is, how tight is the security on those iPads for school? I mean, because I, I know that it's gotten tighter since you started.
Yeah.
Because I experienced some things with my kids.
Yeah.
But how tight is that, like how easy would it be, you know, you're one teacher with all the, like you're fifth grade, and those kids know a lot, and they try spelling something, and it comes up funny, and it goes to a website that maybe they shouldn't be on. How tight is that?
We've done a lot to kind of button that up. One of the things we did was, we put some more heavy-duty filters on things that you can't just go out and like search whatever, much more so than even before. So to try and, whoops, I accidentally typed the wrong thing, or no.
Or something that come up, you typed it right, but it does not come up as what it should.
Exactly. So we've put some filters on things when it comes to web searches and things like that. Even to like, a lot of YouTube videos now have to have approval by the teacher. So there's some kids that were super-duper frustrated when we threw that on, that used to be able to go out and look at their video game sites, or whatever, musical videos, things like that. That's all shut off now. They can't do that when they're at school here. So we have some of those things that we're working on, trying to button that down. Even looking to in the future, looking at when my tech budget, when that maybe frees up a little bit, get things like maybe lockdown browsers where the websites are locked and the students can't go beyond that or whatever in the classroom, like they can only be on the site that the teacher wants them to be on.
But what about at home? I mean, is there something as parents should be doing? Because I mean, I sometimes walk in and like, what are you looking? You know, the YouTube videos for example.
So that's one of the things, the reason I put digital citizenship in there, plus communicating, because one of the things that I want to do better at in getting information out to parents, there are lots of things you can do in your home, but I want to get that information out to people.
I think it's confusing.
And how to contact your internet company, internet provider, how to put those blocks on so that you can make sure that you're monitoring, things that you can do in monitoring what your student's history is, what websites they're going to and things like that. So that's the kind of information, that's one of the reasons I kind of put that in there, communicating to people how you can monitor a little bit better what's going on on your kid's device.
And I would encourage you again to go to that Common Sense Media.
Yeah.
In my lessons, I have a, on my Schoology site, I have not only the student lessons, but I also have a folder for parents, and with each lesson, there's a unit there, tips, and how do you talk to your child about this topic, and how do you make things safer at home, and that screen time, and how to do searches, and so.
Well, yeah, I think as a parent, sometimes my kids are way more tech savvy than I am. So sometimes I don't know, like I'll read that and I, I won't know what they're talking about, but.
But that's a, that's a great teachable moment. That's a great way to communicate with your kids.
Yeah.
There's some schools that are, that fully integrate and there's some that don't. And, and, and right now it's a matter of whether or not we think as a district we have it. And I can understand and I appreciate your, your feedback on all this, so.
The interesting thing for me, I've been on the tech maybe since the four A devices. And we used to go out and visit Farmington and different schools. And I remember when we first started, the big topic was the devices, protecting them, insurance, what do you do if they damage, lose a cord, forget, all those things. And it was never on the curriculum. And now we seem to have shifted a lot to safety of internet. But I'm not, and I know what's happening, but it would be nice to hear more about the curriculum on these devices and truly what they're doing versus digital citizenship about for parents and safety concerns and, and wrong places to go and restrictions. It, it just feels like it's a new negative part of this learning. Could we more get more of the, what are we doing to enhance the learning with these devices? You say it's a tool and I believe it, but we keep hearing more about all the other stuff that we have to be careful of. It's always be careful. Be careful, don't damage the devices. Be careful, don't let them go on. Just, I, I always feel like the focus is away from the actual learning with the device, going away from maybe books and going digital with our reading, I guess would be one good way to go. But I guess more the, the nuts and bolts of what is this technology doing for our kids, not being careful with our kids or having to protect our kids from.
So, so in that, the learning and media outcomes that I have, the tech and media outcomes that I have, I have four broad areas that I, that I basically with the help of Deanne and Matt Jumper and Cindy DeRoger have gone through and identified four broad areas. The first is computer skills and functions, how a computer works and the skills and the functions that you need to make that work. Looking at keyboarding skills, this is in the appendix kind of near the end. And looking at digital citizenship, broad digital citizenship outcomes, and then multimedia tools and applications. So for each grade level in kindergarten through, through eight, we have identified what are the skills, computer skills and functions, the keyboarding benchmarks, the digital citizenship outcomes, and the multimedia tools and apps that we want students to use in, in grades K through eight. When it gets off into the high school, what we assume is that students know how to use their computer. They know how to type. They know how to get onto a website, identify maybe even the toolbar, bookmarks, whatever, how to, how to use their Chromebook or their device. And then we start getting into, okay, now how can I take this and apply this to what's going on in my ninth through, and I broke it up, ninth through and 10th grade classes and 11th and 12th grade classes, and looking at things that help prepare them for college and career readiness. Things like, for example, in our school, a lot of time, we do research papers and a lot of time is spent on MLA, teaching them how to cite sources. But actually, when you go out to college, a lot of students are using things like, like APA. Even to which, what's the appropriate multimedia tools and apps that you need to use for presentations? Not just the ones that we have with our, you know, Google setup, but what are multimedia tools and apps that you can use and choose that you think is appropriate for, for the situation, for the content area. So that is meant to kind of be a guide to help, guide what teachers should be doing in, in the classroom, help me a little bit in kind of guiding how to provide professional development for them. And also to looking at our current applications, our current programs that we have, things like Google Drive, Schoology, even Infinite Campus, which is our attendance and program, kind of looking at how to get that, get that information out to teachers. This is what you can do with this. This is what students can do with this. And just trying to improve upon that and kind of extend it a little bit more. On top of, I am kind of regularly offering, I'm on a lot of web blogs, on a lot of listservs, and I get a lot of information out that goes along with content area and things. And then my, my main goal too is to kind of support with staff development, whatever their learning goals are for the classroom, for their own content areas, for their PLCs, and for the broad district goals, that administration or building goals that principals have for us, so.
Yeah, 21st century learning skills are in all the standards. Kids really need to learn those to be successful. That's the world they live in.
Yeah.
And I think it's great to be teaching them how to use the internet responsibly, you know, how to, how to respond to cyberbullying, all that sort of etiquette and how, you know, all the way through taking hybrid or online courses. So I think it's, it's valuable. It sounds like especially using the Common Sense Media, you're using good. I would make a motion.
Motion by Brenda to approve the technology plan for 1820. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jerry. Further discussion. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That passes by a 5-1 vote, with Kurt dissenting. Consideration to approve the lease agreement for student devices. Who can tackle that?
Any of us can. It is, it's in your packet. It is ongoing lease agreements that we are doing. Remember, we are not doing new agreements with our K1 students, so this is just in line and built into your budget accordingly.
Okay.
But you approve all leases, so that's why it's on here.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Jerry on the motion. Kurt on the second. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Consideration to approve the Cannonball Schools activities and classroom size guidelines.
Okay. I wish I had my computer to put it up there, but you do have it in your packet. And you made a point of putting lines through things that were changed. So I'm just going to really quickly walk this through. You've seen this before. You adopted it the first time back in 2014. We'll leave our special education numbers alone. You'll see later in the agenda that we do have some more students that have qualified, so we're going to, oh, I'm sorry, it's on page 30, Brenda. Hope that helps you out. And we're going to keep our special ed numbers alone. You will see later in the packet that we're hiring another special education teacher. That's because we have these guidelines in place. They really work well with work and caseload analysis and things like that. So we're going to leave that alone. Our preschool, we're going to leave that alone as well. Four-year-olds cannot exceed 17, and our three-year-old program cannot exceed 16. We're going to keep that the same. Some changes that we are going to do is in kindergarten, it used to say 18 to 23, and if over 23, we would hire another teacher. We really value, and I know when I take new families on tours of the school as well as the principals, they, the number one thing they say is we really love your small class sizes. We feel that it's important to do 18 to 21, and if it's over 21 to hire. We heard what member Lochner had said, and she felt strongly about that, as well as grades one and two, instead of the range being 20 to 25, we feel that 20 to 23 is more appropriate. And it still keeps us in line with everything we've done for next year, but allows that number to bring it down a little bit. So you're, you're perfectly fine for next year, but it really kind of guides what we feel is a good selling point of our school and that's small class sizes. I think you would have hired a new one at 24 anyway, but why not have it written the way you would have done it? It just makes more sense. The middle school, we're going to leave that the same. The big one that is, is new, and we really found this as we were going kind of through that reductions process and kind of right sizing things, and it seemed to be inconsistent about whether you were in a drama department or if you were on the football team. And we wanted that to have some consistency. So Jake did lead, and if he was here, he would explain this all to you, but he did leave a very large group meeting on this, and they decided sports teams will have at least 12 participants. Very similar to a class. If Mr. Hodges has a, a class, you, you really need to have at least 10 to 12 kids to make that a goal. It also covers the expense at least of the advisor or the coach. Grades seven through 12 for each season. We're not going to count sixth graders. They're kind of that, if, you know, we need more participants or anything, we can't count sixth graders in that number. Okay? And then activities, being some of those other teams that you saw, you know, your drama, your debate, and your FFA and those kinds of things would be an activity, they must have 10 participants, grade seven through 12, which allows a debate team to still have 10 kids and participate, 10 cheerleaders, you know, those kinds of things. Or, well, that's where that would be a sports team. But it gives you some guidelines. So instead of us just kind of picking out of the air what we think is a good number, the team coaches, head coaches were on this. We had a lot of participants on this team. We'd like to see where this goes and see if you like these guidelines. If a student-coach ratio is above 20 to 1, and that was another thing that Jake really thought was important, like when we hit 21 kids on our cross-country team, we end up hiring an assistant, you know, because they're running at different speeds, and you've got one coach on a bike trying to go to the front of the pack, to the end of the pack. That's, that's for safety. That's not a good idea. So that's been added at the bottom. So if you have any specific questions, I can help you with those, but I think we heard what you had to say, and we tried to put that in writing from that meeting.
How does Title IX fall into this if they don't make the quota and then you have to drop a sport? Does Title IX, is that affected or is that?
It really shouldn't be. I asked Jake the same thing. We still have more girl sports. It's based on participants though overall. Some people kind of get misled by that. Overall participation is, is what. So yeah, sure, that might come into play, but again, that isn't, here's our guidelines. Well, here's the law. The law is always going to trump something that's a guideline. So you've kind of got both things. It's still important, I think, to have a guideline at least.
Mm-hmm.
If you're comfortable with it. If you're not, you know, we can try it for a year, kind of like we tried with those elementary numbers. They just didn't feel good. When we started teetering with 25, that we're never going to do that. So why don't we change it to what we, we feel is our, our value here at Cannonball. So I feel pretty good about this. I know the principals feel pretty good about it. And Jake really invested a lot of time into his portion of it. Looks small on there, but they invested a ton of time on making sure that those were right.
The only comment I've made, it's just based on past history, is when it comes to sports teams and participants, and I know when, if you get into junior high softball or baseball.
Well, it's the whole sport. It's seven through 12. We made sure we put that in here.
Right. I understand that. But I'm, my thought is, and correct me if I'm wrong, because you have more experience in baseball, but when you're dealing with younger kids, anything over 13 kids is, they're not going to learn anything if you don't have extra help. I don't care if it's a volunteer coach or whatever else, but.
Are you talking about the 20 to 1?
I'm talking about the 20 to 1.
Yeah.
I'm not necessarily looking at having to hire another coach. Maybe we can find a volunteer coach if they don't have them.
And we, we do do that anyway. You know, like wrestling was a great example. We, 14 wrestlers this year? Something like that, 14, 13? You have to have those additional people, especially when you're, you know, it can get very dangerous if you don't have that. So I think that's already built in. I think it's more protecting the ones that you don't think, you know, pro track. You think, oh, we got 100 kids out there. They're just running around a track. You still need to have supervision and things like that. So I think that's just a protection number to put in, but I do think that Jake is doing that as well.
Okay.
All right. Good point, though.
Anyone else? Look for a motion here.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Actually, it's a classroom side.
Katie on the motion. Kurt on the second, approving the activities and classroom size guidelines. Other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's Kerry. Consideration to approve the 18, 19 fall head coaches. That would be on page 31.
Yeah, Jake said to tell you, he recommends these coaches for fall head coaching. If you have any questions, he's not here, but I can certainly try to help you out. It's a pretty common name, or names you've seen before.
They're all incumbents, I think.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve.
Brenda's on the motion to approve. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jerry. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Consideration to approve a .6 FTE leave request starting 18, 19 for up to five years.
I'm not sure if the request, is the request in here, Lori? No, it's not. Okay. So I'll explain it a little bit. This is Mr. Addington. He's your art teacher. He was put on unrequested leave and down to .6. He has asked for a leave, very similar to mobility leave, but he doesn't qualify exactly for mobility leave because he hasn't been here for five years. He, he would like to try some other things. We hope that he comes back next year. I hope that our art numbers come back up and that he can be at a 1.0 the following year. But it would be my recommendation to approve a .6 leave for Mr. Addington for next year. Although he can do it up to five years, he has to let us know each year by April 1st, just like our other folks on leave.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kurt.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Other discussion.
So does this come up every year for a vote again?
It will, just like you've seen your other leaves.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Consideration to approve a 1.0 FTE Dina students for 18, 19.
We are really excited to announce this one. He was going to actually try to be here tonight, but it ran into some kid things. But his name is Adam Nelson. He's originally from Red Wing, moving his family. He's enrolling a kindergartner and a preschooler, and he has a young toddler. And they are taking over Grandma's farm out in Welch. So they'll be open enrolling here. We're really excited. I know the whole admin team just feels really, really great about this choice. It feels like he's coming home. He's currently a superintendent, doesn't necessarily love the superintendent world. It is a different world, and he just really missed being a principal. And I think that working with Tim and Jennifer and our team, I think he's really excited to do that. So it is a universal, everyone agreed. He is our candidate. He did accept, and again, he's already sent for paperwork for his kids to get enrolled in, down in Jennifer's building. So we're really excited to welcome Adam Nelson. So my recommendation is to approve Adam Nelson for the 1.0 Dean position.
And one more time, where is he coming from in his most recent history?
He is from Wrenshaw, Wrenshaw. My, Wrenshaw.
Wrenshaw.
Yes, thank you. And he is a superintendent there. And before that, he was a part-time superintendent, part-time principal in Cook County. And before that, he taught at Red Wing High School. So he's kind of come full circle. His parents own the tubing company in Welch. And so many of you probably know that family as well. He's got a lot of roots here, and I think that really showed in the interview. And I think he really showed some passion for wanting to get back to our area, so, yeah.
Tim, anything more?
Mm-hmm.
I'm looking forward to working with him.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Brenda, seconded by Katie. Other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Consideration to approve a 1.0 English teacher for 20, 18, 19.
Sure. On this one, I'm going to want to call her Morgan Godfrey, but she's Megan Schwartz, without a T, without a Z, without a T. Yeah, okay. They interviewed, she's a wonderful candidate, talked to her on the phone. She could not be more excited. She really liked Mr. Hodges. She really liked the school. She liked the team. I offered it to her and she called me back within 15 minutes. She was very, very excited to, again, kind of come home a little bit. And so, yeah, we're really excited to offer Morgan this job. So I would recommend this one again.
Which, who's that again?
Morgan Godfrey.
It's spelled, yeah, but her married name now is S-C-H-W-A-R-Z, no T.
That's Megan or Morgan?
Morgan.
Morgan.
You two wrote each other's.
She said Morgan.
She said both. Sorry. Morgan.
Mr. Hodges, you've hired a lot of people to have them all straight up here. I'm pretty amazed that I can get close.
She changed her first name, too.
Right, right.
And.
Good one, Schwartz, that one. Okay. Look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jerry, second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kurt. Other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Consideration to approve a 1.0 elementary teacher.
We're really excited. This teacher's coming all the way from Nevada. Her name is Mary Burgess, W-E-R-J-E-S. And she'll be teaching fourth grade. The team, everyone was in a joint email. She just sounds so excited to come. She's really, really excited. Had some great questions, and she's also moving to the area as well. So my recommendation would be to approve Mary as well.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Katie?
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Other discussion.
She is not.
That's prequalification.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Consideration to approve a 1.0 high school, middle school math teacher for 18, 19.
And this, this gal, again, I know I sound like a broken record here, just filled white phone on the phone, so absolutely excited to get this position. Her name is Lauren Jensen, and she will be your high school math, math, high school, middle school math teacher. And again, very, very fortunate to accept the job. So I would recommend approving her very quickly. She's a math teacher.
Did you do FaceTime or anything or just phone call?
What's that?
Did you do FaceTime or just, you know, 1990s phone call thing?
Well, everyone, no, everyone does the, the interviews, and then I call them and check what their references and things like that. But it's always fun to kind of after the principals have said, okay, you can call, and they, they sound really excited.
Phone call.
I've met her in face-to-face, so.
They interview them.
Face-to-face time.
Real time.
Real time.
We went to the well a second time for our math program, as far as looking for educators. How did the second round, you got somebody very good?
Yeah, I was, I was a little nervous because we did three in our first round and then we.
Yeah, I was a little nervous, because we did three in our first round, and then we interviewed three in our second round also. And there was no question in our second round. When she was done, everyone was like, yeah, don't let her leave the building before you offer a job. So philosophically, she's right in line with where we're at as far as the staff and great recommendations from her principal, so...
Her references were fantastic.
Yep.
Very good. Where is she coming from?
She is currently in Nicolet.
I'll make a motion to approve a 1.0 math teacher.
Motion by Kurt.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jerry. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Consideration to approve a .5 Title 1 teacher for 18, 19.
We're very fortunate that we had an internal candidate apply for this position. It's Lori Jackson. She currently is already teaching .5 title, and now she'll be teaching 1.0. This allows for continuity in the program, so we're very, very excited to offer Lori this position. So I would recommend approving this.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Brenda.
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Consideration to approve a 1.0 special ed teacher for 18, 19.
Well, as you remember, Madeline, Sunheim, we hired her last year while she was finishing up her student teaching. She knocked it out of the park. Just an absolute great candidate. Sharon did a great job finding her and mentoring her. And I even got a very special note from the people at Winona State, said they have never... I don't know what it said, if you were CC'd on it. It said something like, we've never had a school so, you know, invested in creating a great teacher. And so it felt like a great moment that she now has got a job with us because she did such a fantastic job. So my recommendation would be to continue a new contract with Madeline Sunheim for the upcoming year.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Katie. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jerry. Other discussion? We have a lot of people coming home with a name like Sunheim.
Yeah, right, right.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Consideration to post and hire 1.0 special ed teaching position for 18, 19.
This, it seems hard to believe that I'm coming to with another special ed request, but after looking at caseload analysis and meeting with Sherri Johnson, who's the director of GCD, there's no way around this. This person would be at the high school, middle school, and elementary, kind of filling in some of those holes. We did some evaluations with kids in preschool going into kindergarten, kindergarten going in first. There's just a lot of need, and I want to make sure that we have the right staff in place. Very, very, very hard to find a special ed teacher right now. There's people in the county that have six, seven openings that haven't filled up. So I'm hoping that people just really want to come to Cannon Falls. And so we need to get this posted, and hopefully we'll hire soon, so...
So look for a motion to post and hire.
I'll make a motion.
Brenda? And Kurt on the second? Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry.
Before we move on, I just want to special thanks to these two right here. The hours that they have spent on interviewing. It's always my pleasure to call people and get a reference check, and to meet these people is always the fun part, and I get to do that. These two have sat in hours and hours and hours of interviews. And what that means is they're doing a lot of their work in the evenings. So I just really want to thank you to those two. They... It's been an incredible year of interviewing, so thank you to both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Jake. I should say Jake has really been crazy interviewing, too. It's been a lot for him.
He's not here.
He's not here, he doesn't hear that thing.
We don't need to thank him.
Consideration to approve the 18, 19 list of fundraisers.
Yes, and again, you've seen this as well. I think Jake did a nice job. It's page 32, of drawing lines through things that are no longer. And remember, to add anything, you've got to take something away. So if you see something in bold, that's maybe something new, but that means they took something else away. We feel that we've kind of got this down to a science now. We don't come back to you near as much for a new fundraiser and things like that. This meshes really well with PTO and Ed Foundation as well. We don't do much overlapping anymore. So I think after the third year of doing this, we've got this kind of down to a science. But if you have any questions, I know that I can try to answer them.
So girl soccer sales, pretty general.
And everyone else is fairly specific, food sales, product sales, what's...
Which one are you talking about?
Girls' soccer.
Girls' soccer. Well, they took away car wash. What they're trying to say is the car wash didn't go over very well. We would like to do something else in the area of sales. But if you would like them to come back with a specific, we could do that. That might, yeah, that's not a bad idea.
I would, because everybody else has got, you know, points set up. Everyone else has been pretty good about being specific. Toy show.
You know, what we've done is put them in categories of service versus sales. And we always encourage the coaches to do service if you can. Josh does a nice job of running a basketball camp. Parents love that. It doesn't... They don't have to buy any cookie dough, they don't have to do anything. They get to bring their kids to a camp. We'll encourage him to find another service-type activity instead of sales, but if it's going to be sales, have him come back with something specific.
Yeah, exactly. And my memory is horrible, but didn't we prove it because it was a service and it wasn't a sales?
No, he had two, and we had him go to the service one instead of the sales one.
Okay. So what do we do with that?
Well, I think you could approve everything except the girls' soccer, and then we'll bring that one back. I think it's true, because even tennis has bake sales. You know, at least you know what they're selling.
Right.
So there's an overlap with some of it.
We'll do it by June 11th. Let's have it at the next meeting so we don't lose track of it.
Sure.
You want to be in charge of remembering that, or should we?
Yep.
I'll write it down.
Even better ideas. It really goes to what we wanted to do, is decrease sales or not over-stimulate our community with a lot of sales, so this works just great.
Yep.
How about house cleaning?
I don't know, I think about my voice cleaning skills. I don't know.
So, Rob, your suggestion would be to approve the list of fundraisers as shown, with the exception of girls' soccer, and we'll wait for a commitment from them as to what they're going to do?
Yes, more specific.
By the, yeah, by June 11th. I wrote it down, we'll get something for her.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll approve all but that one then for future information. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Rob made that motion, Kurt made the second. Other discussion? This has been really improved over the last couple of years.
Has it better?
Yeah, it's not better for us. Anything else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Consideration to approve the 18, 20 LPN contract.
All right, this is where I wish I had my projection as well, but I'll do my best to explain it. LPNs were very, very easy. We did 50 cents an hour this year and 50 cents an hour next year. So put this underneath Mayo and some other places that do the LPNs. But I think the enticement of having to only be here on student contact days plus a couple of other workdays is really a plus for people that want the work schedule. Our LPNs are able to job-share, which is also very, very enticing to them. So there is nothing additional except 50 cents and 50 cents an hour.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Jerry on the motion?
I'll second.
Rob, seconds. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Consideration to approve the 18, 20 Community Ed Activities Director Contract.
I'm going to share the Google Doc with you tomorrow. It gives you all the details of anything, but on this one, it's two and a half, two and a half. We're staying in line with everyone else. And they also got a personal day added. We're finding that some of these kids, you know, and I think, Mr. Stephen Oller, you have a child that works down there, you know, they don't get any days. So if they have a big test or anything, they want to take a day off, or they don't have that. So they do have one personal day added now.
Which one is this?
Oh, I skipped ahead, I skipped ahead. This is the Community Ed one. I'm sorry, I'll go back. The 17 is Jake, two, two and a half, two and a half, and five vacation days. That way, he is in line with the other people in the district office. I apologize, I saw Community Ed. He's Community Ed Activities Director, yes.
Is that subadditional?
Adding five vacation days.
Five vacation days. He doesn't need a sub or anything like that. He can't cash them out, nothing like that. So it allows him with young children to have more time if he needs. He is currently only at 15 days, which is not, when you work year-round, that's pretty low. So it was very doable.
Maybe this is a contracted four?
260, just like me. There's five of us in the district that are 260-day employees.
Kate, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion.
Two and a half, two and a half.
Kurt? Kurt on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Consideration to approve the 18, 20 Office Support Contract.
This one, I believe, is in your packet, right Lori?
Nope. None in the printout.
None in the printout, okay. If you would like to see it, I can send it to you. I was going to have it up on the projection. Can't do that right now. Give me, I'll show you later what's going on on the computer. Nonetheless, no one is on this contract as of yet, okay? We are going to remove people as they retire or resign from the school district. We are going to give them Office Secretary's contract. What happened is they used to be 12-month employees, and now they're closer to nine-month or 10-month employees. And so we need to, we need to kind of make sure the benefits align with that number of days. And so with that said, when we rehire for Jamie Pickering's position, they'll be on what we call an Office Support Contract. It realigns everything. It's the same pay, but with different benefits. And we think it's a really good, a good contract. We can't afford to put people on the secretarial contract right now. The benefits are really quite high. And so even Phyllis Elthoff, who is one of the negotiators, likes it so much. She asked if she could be moved over to it, because she's part-time. We won't be doing that right now, but it is a good contract. But it'll be what you're... Am I saying it all right, Lori? It's what the new secretaries from here on out will be on.
But nobody's on it, no one's going to be on it?
No, I just want you to see it ahead of time, that that's, when the fall, when you hire a new Office Support Person, that's the contract they'll be on.
Can I make a motion at table till we see the contract, before we approve the contract?
It's not attached on their document at all. Yeah, I would table it. If you haven't seen it, don't...
And this is just for the support?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
Make a motion to table it.
Absolutely. I thought it was attached, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Rob makes a motion to table.
I'll second that.
Tabled by Rob, seconded by Jerry. All in favor of tabling this for the time being, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I apologize on that, that was intentional.
I have number 14 for the next meeting.
Right, right.
Or 15.
And again, no one's on it. I just want you to see the things ahead of time, because then you understand kind of why I'm doing it the way I'm doing it. It just, it's to help you always kind of understand ahead of time versus reaction, so...
Yeah, here's why people want to jump over there.
Right, right.
We haven't seen their...
Secretaries? They just approved theirs, but it didn't make the deadline, so...
I just wanted to...
Yeah, right.
Consideration to approve the 18, 20 CE Activity Secretary Contract.
Okay, she was, this is Molly in Jake's office here. She settled for two and a half, two and a half, and she gets two floating holidays instead of the specific ones. And the reason for that is her kids go to Goodhue School, so she lives in Goodhue, and they have Martin Luther King Day off every year. And so she'd like to float some of her holidays so that she could be off with her kids. It doesn't cost us anything, it just allows her to kind of fluctuate with her own kid's schedule. So I thought that was a really good option for hiring them.
Brenda on the motion? Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jerry. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Consideration to approve the proposed budget for fiscal year 19.
Page 33. That's where everything's at. You've seen this before. We're going to, Josh probably walked you through it. Should be pretty self-explanatory.
Page 33 has, again, the big summary.
Really what you're looking at is the very top third of that document. And it really summarizes everything down into the main funds of the school district. Within all these are about thirteen hundred lines of seventeen digit codes that feed into all these funds. The biggest one for the district is going to be the general fund, the general operating fund. Majority of our expenditures follow through there. Nearly all salaries, all your teachers' wages, benefits are going to follow through there. Admin and the like, operations, maintenance, transportation and the like. So the majority we look at always is the general fund. The other funds are the ancillary and go to serve what we do here in the district. In the general fund, we start with some assumptions and without the session being complete, we're basically running off of their kind of revenue projection model, which doesn't quite give a full two percent. So revenues may be a little bit understated and I think that in terms of planning for a budget and going on initially, we're looking at trying to balance or move up our fund balance, that that's an okay where, place to start. Be really, I think, a little bit irresponsible on my end to put in a high number for revenue and try to shoot the moon a little bit, don't want to find out I got to come back to you in January and say, here, we have to redo our budget and our expenditure is much further over the revenue. So the revenue you see there, twelve point six million dollars, it is a revenue increase from prior year. But again, a conservative estimate of what we've put in for kind of our sort of anticipations for the coming year. Expenditures also be increased. More larger we look in here are going to be contract settlements increased. And not only do you increase the salary to do that, but the corresponding increases to FICA for taxes, TRA, PRA, benefits associated with that will increase as well. So as we put those settlements in and then do estimates for contracts that aren't settled, the expenditures will increase. Also look at increasing amounts for utilities. We saw this last year, even though we're much more efficient in the energy that we use in the district, electricity, you'll see this in your home bills, electricity is a significant cost increase. And when you're looking at the sort of energy our district uses, that's a significant dollar amount. So add some funds into the operations budget to help cover anticipated increases in expenditures. So when it all boils down to it and you're looking at twelve and a half million dollars plus in expenditure and revenues, looking at a surplus next year or to the good of about sixty-five thousand. And again, if anything, maybe overestimating expenditures just a bit to be on the safe side and maybe be a little bit conservative on the revenue side. So hopefully by the time we're doing it at this point next year in June and we're trying to revise budget, we're looking at a much more positive situation. But regardless, starting off the fiscal year on a good foot. What this does is put our projected audit total at about nine hundred thousand dollars. Not quite to the nine, nine and a half percent that we're shooting for. In order for those things to happen, you need to have expenditures over revenues, or sorry, revenue over expenditures by that two hundred and ninety thousand dollars we tried to cut. We're getting it close and I think maybe as we get through the year and we start to see where expenditures actually fall and where the, you know, the session actually ends for funding for school districts, we'll start falling a little closer to that. Hopefully this seven point two, seven point two-five percent is more of a bottom figure for our fund balance percentage as we go up. But again, trying to be a little conservative as we go. So that's the general fund. The middle section there, just if you wanted to kind of compare what our last numbers are for the revised, but you can kind of see, it's nice sometimes to compare what we're going to be going forward to in this year in the fiscal year nineteen versus where we're at right now in eighteen. And the bottom is kind of you do that summary of change, the variance or difference. So in the most time on the, on the general fund. Food service, there's a fund where we really look at trying to do our best to break even there. Really, the revenues is really dictated on a lot of not only the revenue coming in from student lunches, but we get in for free and reduced from state and federal sources. Expenditures, the largest part that we have are going to be the groceries that we need to purchase for the food service and the wages. And after that, we can try to allocate some allowable expenses, either custodial or utilities. But really the function of the food service department in the school district is to serve the food. So we try to be conservative with that. And again, we'll come with a positive balance, about ten thousand dollars at the end of fiscal year for food service estimated right now. Community Ed, your ECFE programs, your preschool, Cannon Kids, summer break, those sorts of programs are going to be following within your community service. At the, you know, just a slight increase or a slight positive balance here, revenues over expenditures and a projected audit total of about a hundred and forty thousand dollars at the end of the year. Construction, we cleaned up everything from our long-term facility maintenance project. So we had a little bit of spend down left over in fiscal year eighteen of fifty-five thousand dollars. That's all been spent. That project is closed up and wrapped up, so you'll see no revenue or expenditures in the building constructions fund for fiscal year nineteen. Debt service, it'll be a large variance in what we had for pension revenue last year to what we have in fiscal year nineteen. And that is due to the refunding of the bonds. Last fiscal year, we were able to refund two thousand seven A and two thousand eight A debt service bonds and a significant reduction or savings for the district and our taxpayers. It doesn't shorten the term. What it does is reduce the amount of payment each year. And what that does then is lower the tax burden on our community. So you'll see large revenue expenditure numbers in fiscal year eighteen to, we received the refund and then paid those out. Fiscal year nineteen, I give back your normalized payments for debt service. So you'll see a reduction in the debt service expense. Revenue is set to collect a hundred and five percent, assuming some delinquency in payment of taxes. So you see a positive balance there in the debt service at the end of fiscal year. There's a mechanism set up with colonies and state that if we have too much or an excess debt service, that will be automatically reduced and again, giving another savings to the taxpayers. While that is a good thing for the district, it's saving us money. It doesn't do anything to help us with the general fund. The debt service is strictly to pay for the debt. But again, it is good for our taxpayers and our community. Trust Agency is our scholarship fund. The general, you'll see more expenditure than revenue there simply because some of those scholarships are set up in trusts and they just kind of spend down over the years. So while we do have a lot of new scholarships, one that I see checks daily from, that right now is for Dylan Johnson. She's found eighty-six people to give a hundred bucks apiece. So I see checks daily coming through. So we'll see a lot of revenue and a lot of generous people giving into scholarships. But you do see some of those trusts that are spending it down. So generally, you're going to see more expense than revenue in the, in the scholarship fund. OPEP trust, what we're looking at there is the one million dollar bond that the school took out to help pay down some other post-employment benefits. We're coming real close to the end of that, basically two years left to have that fund to help offset some of those expenses. The corresponding fund to that is the OPEP debt service and the debt on that. And we will have a timed out where the benefit to us of being able to help offset some costs at OPEP falls off at the same time as the debt to us or the obligation or the debt service comes off. There will need to be some discussions in our district on how we're going to handle that. It'd be essentially a hundred thousand dollars that we'll have to come up with each year.
And the state is looking at some of those things too. So, you know, it'd be nice to see when the session gets done if they play into that a little bit.
There's that and then also this last negotiation was memorandum understanding prior to the settlement and then non-settlement is the sunsetting of our retiree's benefits. So we're able to levy for some of that. It does put the burden back on taxpayers, but it does for the district help out some of that cost for us, so. I said, that's a brief summary. It's really about sixty-seven page document of thirteen hundred codes that you go through. But if there's anything that you want to go through or have explained more in detail, whether it be by department or organizational unit or even, you know, social studies versus the math or science, we can certainly go through that. But for the most part, I think pretty much plugged in. And again, it's been more of my sorts of dealings of doing budgeting and working with super agencies is probably more on the conservative side of things, so. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
What I'd like to do is be able to motion and second and then discuss till everybody's satisfied. Can we get a motion to approve the proposed budget? Jerry on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded for Rob. Further discussion? Certainly last fall, we had some very animated discussions in and around the audit time about where we were going to end up, that we were hoping for double digits. We didn't come close to that. And I think we settled for somewhere about seven plus?
Just under seven.
Just under seven. So what are you telling us right now for?
Yeah, so if this were to all hit, and then again, this assumes that where we're at for fiscal year eighteen hits and then the projected or the proposed budget for nineteen hits, we'll be about seven two five, seven three at the end of the fiscal year.
There's still some pretty big variables that could happen.
Yeah, again, there's some very big variables. And we talked about through the assumptions here. Pretty conservative with the revenue side of it. Not going to have to come back to you in January and say, you know, enrollment was off by this much, what we got from the state was off by this much. Now we're looking at three hundred thousand dollars, you got to cut mid-year. So trying to be conservative on the revenue side going into it. Likewise, on the expenditure side, trying to make sure that we get everything put in. All the teacher contract settlements are put in. Try to put on some realistic and reasonable expectations for non-sold contracts inside of this budget as well as try to, you know, do our best to plan and estimate utilities and such that are kind of corresponding to what we did or what we're seeing in fiscal year eighteen to carry forward. I don't see the electricity bill going down in fiscal year nineteen. So I may put a little bit more built into there to make sure that we're going to cover ourselves, hopefully, in worst case scenarios. So hopefully, the premise would be we come back in mid-year when we revise budget and looking at a little bit better picture towards, you know, eight, eight and a half, nine, maybe percent. It's all going to be varied on not spending more than we're bringing in. Really, the only way that we can make our fund balance grow is to have revenues exceed the expenditures. So given the situation right now with a balanced budget, we're going to stay at seven percent in perpetuity. As long as we're balancing it out, if we get years where we can get revenue to exceed the expenditures, then we're looking at opening that debt up. And we made the cuts or reductions, the two ninety that we're looking at to try to get it to the nine, nine point five percent for our fund balance. Plug all those in and, and budget wise, but then with our assumptions that we're at for being conservative with revenues and trying to plan out where we have to expenditures, this is where it fell out. So I don't want to come to you with a unrealistic budget and say, hey, we're two ninety off and I'm going to give you nine point five and then not give it to you when it comes.
Whenever you talk variables, you're talking only about revenue. You're also talking about expenditures that we never foresee and then we just get blindsided with a lot of.
Yeah, it's a.
How do you know that, remember that year the DSA went to five dollars a gallon? No one saw that coming. And then we did it for the whole year.
The real, you know, there's a lot of things that really parts to go into and with and around it and, you know. For me, I'm a couple of saying, hey, we're only off a hundred thousand dollars a year because a hundred thousand dollars, that's a lot of money. But in a twelve point five million dollar budget, a hundred thousand dollars is a very small percentage of that. But, you know, we're trying to be as fiscally solid and reasonable and realistic and still offer the good programming that we need to have in our school to make sure kids are getting what they need and, and staff has what they need to be successful in that too.
Other questions?
I really like what he's done. I like everything about it. I think it's very conservative, but I think it feels good to us. And I think moving forward, it's going to be a really good year if we stay in line with it. If you have any sections that you really are interested in, it's really easy for us to pull that or come in. We like to explain it to you. If you have a certain department or anything you want to walk through, we can do that anytime. And that's a good way to do it. Josh would love to give you sixty-seven pages. I like giving you a one-page, you know, snapshot, you know, because for me, I think it's, it's a good overview and it's enough to take in on one night. But I, I think it looks really, really good.
Thanks. Any other discussion? All in favor of the approved proposed budget? Yeah, we did, I'm sorry, Jerry made it, Rob, okay.
Well, you're on tonight, Jerry.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Opposed? Carry? Consideration to set June eleventh of twenty eighteen as a board meeting date.
You guys, you can look at the list. We need to have an extra meeting in June. I got a lot of hiring that we're still going to need to do. I've got four more contracts we need to get through. We're just, we're really busy right now, like crazy busy. So please, can we add one in June? I'll give, it'll be really, I'll have it super, can you all check your calendars?
Super what?
I don't have it, I don't want to say it'll be quick. I want to say I'll have it very organized and ready to go.
Not going to happen.
I will bring snacks, yes I will. I can do snacks.
June eleventh, what do you think?
What do you guys think? Can you do it?
I'll make a motion.
Brenda on the motion?
Brenda.
And who's on the second again here? It's because nobody's said it.
Look at their check on their calendars.
We just need a quorum.
I keep Monday nights open.
I'll second.
Jerry will second.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No enthusiasm there, Rob. Opposed?
You look like you're a teeth bull, but you still got to do so sometimes.